Aren't they energizing this? It's their businesses, it's the streets. I don't under- so that's what I understand.
I understand your frustration.
I don't keep putting money into something when they're not doing something. What do- I don't get a great feedback from all of the majority of the people on Main Street that, you know, that they want to make things better, but yet we're going to make it better for them. You know, there's just a little bit of JFK don't ask what, you know.
Well, speaking as a Main Street business owner...
I don't disagree with Dave. I understand like what the first- I feel, trust me, the frustration that you feel because I am trying to do something positive and I hit brick walls a lot of the time, but I feel like there's good energy, we're gonna try to do this contest or something, and I want the village, as a person who volunteers for the village, as a resident, et cetera, to like, you know, partner on these efforts at- you guys be the positive energy.
We purchased bricks, right? I mean, didn't we purchase all the bricks so far?
Yeah.
I mean, as a kickoff, we started that. We purchased all the bricks that are in these areas.
Yes, and I thank you.
We've put- we've laid bricks down there. We've waxed areas, I don't think they do that all the time. Not- I mean, it's not like we're doing it on a schedule, but, you know, how much, I mean, where are we? Tell me, well, what are we supposed to do to make it look like we care? I mean, everything we do is, you know, we spent a lot of time trying to, you know, promote businesses. We work with C Street a lot this year, trying to- with the Chamber, and trying to get them to like, you know, put out, hand out brochures, and working with the Chamber and contacting them. I mean, so, we're doing a- we're doing a lot to like, you know, to improve businesses in the- on the Main Street district, so, you know, I'm not sure. I think I'm played out, you know? I'm not investing any more of my time or whatever in it, you know?
And our- this is like a point of pride though, Dave.
I am proud of it, and I've done my part, but I mean, what do you do? Am I supposed to go out and- are we supposed to, as the board, go out and do these personally? Go out and do each one of these sections? Because we're proud. What about the pride of the people that are affected the most by it?
You know, I always think when we have this discussion, the Main Street is such a small part of this village.
It's true.
You know, there's residents. I mean, if we- if we want to put money into cleaning up or beautifying, what about the- what about the residential streets?
Well...
What about the, you know?
And some of the spots in front of these buildings are like, like, it's five minutes worth of work. It's not like you're out there for days in the sun. It's like weeds in a small section that I could literally do probably in 10 minutes, or if you were getting them before they even got big. And people can't come down here? I mean, it's not like the streets are packed and they can't just walk outside and pick a few weeds. Sorry. You know, I take pride in my street. My neighbors take incredible pride in their street. Our street's like, you know, people are out there all the time. I'm not saying everyone has to do that, but yeah, I take pride in what's in front of my house and my section, and so does all of my neighbors. You know, so, I think there should be a- some kind of call to neighbors and call to the people on Main Street to, you know, we're trying, we're investing money, we're investing in planting trees, and a lot of the trees are going on Main Street and keeping them pruned, and you're doing a lot of work and only energy that you're putting into it. I mean, that's a matter of pride too. All the hours that you've put into it and your guys, that helps Main Street too, as long- as well as everyone else. And all the time we're putting in to like things like C Street are trying to make money and trying to bring money and revenue into the village, you know, to help everyone. You know, I think that's because we have pride in it, it's not because we don't care, so, I don't know what more, you know, people want, you know? Because I don't have much more to give on that part. I spend a lot of time here and just, you know, we, you know, we gave bricks to start things going, we finished that one down there, and you know, so, people gotta step up. Not you, and not your board, and not us. People on Main Street, in the Chamber, or the Chambers is everyone, so it's not them. People need to...
Well, the Chamber hopefully is stepping aside. We just met with them last week, so I'm hoping we'll be positive. Maybe we just put a pin in this, and I'm gonna talk to you all privately, because I have some other- some ideas that aren't trying to drag money from other places. I know it- money is tight. I just- my problem is, I want to solve this issue, like, and it's an issue everyone talks about. I mean, it's like, it's an issue. And it's an issue because the volunteers that did it stopped doing it, you know, eight years ago, however long that was. So, like, there's a way to solve it, and if it's not, if it's all, the village is all done with it, well, we need to figure out some other solution, and I just hope the village will be part of, like, helping, you know, sponsor the volunteer, I don't know, something that could be a partnership instead of a...
I think we have been already, and I don't think there is a divide.
It's hard to...
Why- why does everyone sing it that we're not doing anything or that we don't care? Which is what you're saying now.
No, that's not- no, 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 that's not what I'm saying.
But you're saying you want us to bring- you'd be proud of it and bring, you know, and work with people, but we are working. It's like, there's no other people that are working with us.
No, I think that it would be...
Bring those people in.
Well, I don't know how to do it.
I don't either.
That's what I'm- I guess that's what I'm- I'm expressing a similar kind of frustration just that you're expressing, but in a different way.
I think it's hard too.
Which is, I see this problem, I don't know how to solve it. Well, I've lived here long enough to know, like, it's not an easy problem solved, but...
So, let's each wanna- why don't you communicate with us separately? Maybe we can come up with some ideas.
Well, what I'll do is, if it's okay with you, I'll just send you the list of what the tree committee's different ideas, different combinations of things, and maybe just for some feedback, and then we'll start then.
That'd be great.
And then maybe it dies, and again, it's not our- the tree board's responsibility either. This is sort of like, you know, above and beyond. It's the weeds, the trees will grow despite the weeds, so...
What, I mean...
But it might be an easier solution than we think.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm sorry, that was way too long.
Then you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna say that as a- I could use some guidance, because as a Main Street business owner, I mean, I try to beautify my tree pit every year, and the tree sucks every bit of life out of anything I plant there. And also, eleven hundred dol- I mean, I would love to put- to sponsor those guards, but eleven hundred dollars is just more than I can do.
It's true, for most people.
So, it would be really nice to have some other kind of option.
Some of them are six hundred dollars, if that number's...
Well...
But still, it's a lot, it's a lot for your average small business to do.
Yeah, and, you know, look at it, we've got- we've got four months to make our nut for the year. That's really what it comes to. You know, we're struggling just to break even the rest of the year, and we've got four months to maybe make a profit. So, you know, I'm all for holding- holding business owners and, you know, lessies and building owners to, you know, making them be aware of their responsibility to maintain the sidewalks, including the tree pits, in front of their businesses. It's just not really clear which one belongs to which business, you know? Because sometimes there's some overlap and that kind of thing. And also, just what to- you know, I could use some advice, because I put at least a hundred and fifty dollars' worth of plants in every year, and I have to replant it every year, because, you know, it's- that tree sucks every bit of life out of that, of anything that I try to put there, except for lilies of the valley, which look good for maybe a week or so.
The other thing is, like, I, you know, I don't, you know, like, if... My frustration is, is just as I expressed it, but, you know, also, you know, as a mayor and the pride of Main Street, you know, like, I did do that down there to get it going, but Stephanie and I also donated seven hundred dollars around for the tree pit out here, which has nothing to do with our street or anything else. So, and we're not wealthy people, so, you know, we had some money and we donated this space. So, you know, again, you know, how much do people want from individuals to beautify an area that, you know, I guess the consequences of not looking good or having pride in it or their own businesses? So, anyway, I just wanted to make that point.
It is as simple as starting with putting out some kind of better call, like, calling on citizens to- I mean, you mentioned your donation, but there's been- there's tons of people that have that kind of inclination, and maybe they could be persuaded, you know?
Adopt a pit?
We have adopt a pit program, but it's not...
But it's not well-known.
But it's not well-known and it's not well-publicized. So, maybe, you know, I'll send you some ideas of partnering with the village, to put out a call far and wide, or make crazy posters, like, I can do that on my own dime, or, you know, some- if there's a way to get the public more enthusiastic about, you know, being citizens together with the village government, I think that would be the ideal solution. And trust me, I a hundred percent sympathize with Dave's frustration here. I'm not disagreeing with him at all. And I feel like people don't understand that government, the village government, is them. I mean, that, especially in a small village like ours, it's not- people, especially people moving up from the city, feel like they're used to a space where government is this removed thing. Well, they should be taking care of that. My tax dollars should be taken care of that. But really, in this village, the government is you. Our tax dollars take care of this much stuff, but everything else is, you volunteers, I know you all get paid a tiny amount, doing this work, me doing this work. And I think that more average citizens that aren't on the board should step up and, you know, and volunteer, or donate a few bucks, or, you know, that sort of thing. I totally agree with Dave on that point, but I had hoped it would be more sort of village-led, or more- more like, organized, some kind of publicized official thing, and that maybe that's the thing, the piece that's missing.
I think it's hard when you- when you came in and said, like, you wanted us to have a, like, a- charity's not the right word, but have a donation for beautification. We have a tree budget. I mean, to us, it's like, this is a lump of money that goes for the trees, for whether we need to take down a tree that's falling, or whether we have some extra money for plants. This is the lump of money out of our budget that we can fit into this particular process, and if one year the money all goes because trees are falling, or because we need to take down trees, or whatever else we have to do, then we don't have money that year for beautification. You know, maybe another year when we finally get to the point where we have trees that aren't falling on our heads every time they're, you know...
Well, it would surprise you to know that there's a beautification line in the village budget, separate from the tree board. I don't know where that money goes every year, but most villages have some kind of something like that, separate from this.
We have a beautification line at our...
Again, the work that I do is not beautification. It's literally almost always safety and hazard removal, trying to keep trees from falling down on people.
Which is, since you guys came on board...
And it's gonna be used up every year for the next thirty years, because we don't have enough money even to do what needs to be done there. So, we're never gonna do this.
So, just because there's a line there, it doesn't mean we have money to put in. If we- if we need more money to take down trees, we don't have money to put in the beautification line. It's just, it's like your home budget, you know? If you have, you know, fifty dollars this week and you need food, you're not gonna go buy clothes. You know, that's just sort of the way it goes. I mean, there may be, you know, there may be a line there...
Trust me, I understand. I used to- my family used to be on, you know, free milk cards at school. I understand budgeting, not to the level that you guys do, but I also understand that if you always think like that, this little thing, these little points of pride, they'll never get addressed, ever, ever. Until you have a few volunteers that'll weed the whole street, you know, I took the middle school students for two or three years in a row up and down the street in the fall a couple times, that took a whole day, it was insane, and, like, we'll have that piecemeal every once in a while, and if that's fine with everyone, that's fine with everyone. I'd like to see it a little bit more organized.
Well, I know there's still some- there's still some confusion among some business owners on Main Street, that the village isn't profiting from the money that they raise through their taxes. They're unaware that we get nothing that goes to the county, and I've had more than one discussion where these business owners are like, well, you guys are getting all this tax money from our- because we attract business to the town, and I have to tell them that's not correct. There's not a lot of them that don't know this, but there are still some out there. So, when you get an attitude like, well, our tree pits, you know, the village should fix that, because the village gets money from us and they should make it look nice.
I have that conversation with business owners every week.
They don't know that...
They don't know it, but they don't want it.
There's- the money that we spend is coming from residents, not from tax letting. So, I think that if people- if they understood that better, maybe they'd be more eager to make, you know, lend a hand or whatever, or make that information clearer, I don't know.
So, you'll get a doctorate?
Yeah, so, I'll- don't worry. I'll continue this discussion offline, and thank you for taking over the meeting with it.
Any other further comments?
No.
Any other comments?
Any comment? Anything else? Think of motion to adjourn?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Freedom of the red socks. Freedom of the red socks.
What do you mean?
Yeah, it's early, still too early to get excited about it.
Any Canadian themes for sure?
Yeah.
Four dollars. Take on highway?
Highway. For the month of September, we collected forty-six point three tons of garbage and fourteen point two six tons of recycling. For the month of September, we had two brush pickups organized and made necessary repairs to the highway department shed, put two benches out around the village, fixed the broken light sensors in the ceiling of the bandstand, burned weeds at the dock and the nine eleven memorial, welded a new floor in the fire department dumpster, dug out the culvert on Fair Street across from the wastewater plant, and cut the limbs at the riverfront that were a safety concern. At Mayor's Park, we installed new paper towel dispensers in the bathrooms, fixed the broken picnic table, installed snow fence around the baseball infield for the Oktoberfest festival, and cleared the limbs that were blocking the satellite for the cameras at the bathrooms. We rented a stump grinder for the grinding and removal of thirty-two stumps around the village. I met with Supervisor Mark Newman of the New York State DOT Signal Department to reset the computer and the flashing crosswalk signal, and received a complete tutorial on how to fix and maintain said signals. I have been in contact with Amy McKenzie of the New York State DOT Planning and Program Management Group to update our local highway inventory so we can receive the maximum return on our CHIPS program. I also met with Sal Padala of S.P. and Sons Construction to go over the Garden Street repaving project so we can complete said project before winter. Aside from standard maintenance on the trucks, we installed a new cam sensor and welded the broken dumpster safety latch on the O-three International garbage truck. The same O-three garbage truck had to be towed to Riverview Industries to have a new transfer pump installed. For the month of October, we're looking to trim and tree limbs that hang into the roadway, grind down the trip hazard on the sidewalks, prep Garden Street for paving, and start getting ready for the coming autumn.
You did a lot. Justice Court. Fines, forfeited bales, and civil penalties, forty-nine hundred twenty-five dollars, parking tickets, three thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars, civil fees, five hundred sixty-five dollars, mandatory state surcharges, two thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars, for a total of eleven thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars. I do not have anything. Dave, anything?
No.
Friend?
Just that Greg said that we had met with him, and we have the ad that we probably should get out into the papers or wherever else we're gonna get it sooner rather than later. When we spoke to Joe with Greg, he's got a couple of positions he has worked with municipalities to fill, has taken up to nine months to fill, to get somebody that, you know, is qualified to do the job. So, we need to look at this and get this moving sooner rather than later. That's one thing. The other thing is, I just wanted to acknowledge, because sometimes I think, you know, Lynn and I had talked one time and said, nobody ever acknowledges the fact that we do the picnic, the senior picnic. There was a very nice thank you ad in the PCNR this week from Greta Graham and the Phillips Town seniors thanking us for the picnic, and I thought that was very nice.
That was kind.
Lynn?
I haven't got anything this month.
Marie?
Yeah.
Okay. That brings us to a discussion, proposed wine and food festival on August two thousand and nine.
Two thousand nineteen.
What's that?
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nineteen, sorry. And Jack Goldstein's representing the applicant, I guess? Or are you part of it, or just representing?
I'm just here to answer any questions that I can. Lauren Drummond couldn't make it tonight, so I said that I would come and...
Can you kind of give us a overview of it?
She has been doing this in the Patterson area, in Put Valley, for the past eight or nine years, and I'm not personally familiar with it, I've never gone, but Tom Alfano, who owns the antique vault on Main Street here, who also ran the Patterson Flea Market for many years, is, has been familiar with it, and endorsed her ability to carry it out and her responsibility in terms of meeting her obligations. So, the- and I have met with her about it. She is very eager, because she goes out far in advance to try and get participants. She's very eager to get approval, because the location obviously makes a big difference. My sense is that she is just feels it's time to inject some new energy into it, and then a new location would be helpful to do that. She does have charitable beneficiaries of the event. The American Cancer Society is one and will be one during the coming year, but she's open to suggestions to local not-for-profits to benefit from it.
So, is this working through- is this a private enterprise?
It's a private enterprise, totally a private enterprise, and I know that has an impact on fees and the like, but she has carried it off, as I said, very successfully, apparently, for the past year. So, the Chamber has agreed to support it and to try and be as helpful as possible if the application is approved, and she emailed me today, when she let me know if she couldn't be here, that the Putnam County Tourism Office has also endorsed it, and will presumably be of some help however they can in terms of promoting it.
Jack, the attendance here is a thousand, is that per day or across the two-day event?
And I can't tell you, Marie, but I can find out.
Yeah, it's- it's low.
I think it's across the entire event, but...
That sounds low. For the...
Well, I think that may be one of the issues that's driving her to try and find a different location, for Put Valley is not as conveniently located as we are here. I think because of all of the ink that Cold Spring has received over the past year in various national publications, you know, the last one was in September in New York Magazine, that I think she feels that having it here, locating it here, both because of the transportation convenience of the train, will be attractive both to attendance, but also to the participant shooting gap.
And is this a- it's a rain or shine event, so they provide tents?
Again, I...
It's on the, if you look on this one, there's some tent. Flip it over, there's a map, and there's- they show tents from the last time. Is that what it was?
I don't...
Do you know how many times this event's been put on in the past?
I believe it's eight years.
Okay.
It may be nine years, but I'm pretty sure it's eight years.
Long time.
And has Lauren been the organizer for all this time?
She has. It's been her idea, and she's executed it.
So, the Recreation Commission has invited a question to ask the board in reviewing this, and that is, this is not a resident of Cold Spring or Phillips Town. Okay? And in the past, the application process has nothing for people who do not live in Cold Spring or Phillips Town renting or using Mayor's Park.
This is...
So, I mean, this is something that we had a long discussion about when we had- we looked at this originally, is that there is nothing on the application, and there's nothing down, so it says very specifically that Mayor's Park is for residents. Okay? So, the biggest question we have is, this, when we saw in the application, this person is from Patterson, not from Cold Spring. The organization is Green Energy Productions LLC, that's the name of her group, and so, that's- that was our- that was our first big question on the Recreation Commission, that we- is this something we want to pursue, having outside groups use Mayor's Park, when it says on all of our applications for residents of Cold Spring or Phillips Town? So, I mean, to me, that, once we answer- you answer that question, then we can, you know, look at the applic- again, we're always going back and looking at what these new things bring up to our application process, and how we're gonna consider that, because every time we come, there's a new question. But, so that was our biggest first question. Is this something that we're going to now pursue as a village?
Yeah. The application, although I don't see it on this application, but I don't believe there's anything in the code that says that Mayor's Park is limited to residents of Phillips Town. I mean, there was pricing structured around whether or not you're a resident of the village or resident of Phillips Town.
I guess the sign that says...
Is on, yeah. But it says, you know, Mayor's Park is for you, but if we wanted to rent it out to someone other than, you know...
But in the- in the application revision that we're doing, we have none of- none of my little areas say a for-profit, not resident of Cold Spring or Phillips Town.
So, maybe we need to...
So, I mean, I mean, so that's the question we bring first, because as a group, look at doing the applicant- revising the application and considering new applicants, how is that gonna work? And how does that affect the fee structure that you established? Or does it?
Alternatively, we could do a doc site. Alternatively, we could do a doc site.
So, Village Park.
It's a state park.
Well, I guess, but the question is, like, do- would we- do we want to, moving forward, rent it to, you know, groups other than residents? I'm sure she can find a resident that can also put in the application. That's what I would do.
And then the other piece of it is, you know, most likely, and this is a guess, nothing will happen there for, you know, two days. We don't have that much use of Mayor's Park as a place that's being rented that we're gonna worry about. You know, we're pushing village residents or Phillips Town residents out of the way to let somebody who's not a resident in. I don't think that's, you know, an issue, it doesn't get that kind of use. You know, it has small parties and stuff like that, but this is what we get in August.
I'm not questioning it. No, no, I know, I'm just trying to know. The Commission just needs to know.
Yeah.
Because on our revised application working on, you check one of the following: Cold Spring Village resident, Phillips Town resident, not-for-profit organization. So, I mean, we don't have anything that someone would say, I'm not a resident of Cold Spring.
So, maybe as you're working on, you know...
But it doesn't say it's required, it just asks if you are, right?
Yeah.
So, you check the box, I'm not, or whatever.
What would the fee be for something like this, for example? If it works?
The fee structure that you established last year for- let me just go make sure I have the right...
One reason I asked Ruthann to hold on, or not to process this, was because we didn't have fee structure for, like, events this big, so...
I think Jeff gave her an estimate based on what we gave John Shear.
I mean, John Shear, we're gonna charge two thousand dollars.
Yeah. And, again, and the one that we've been reviewing, and always reviewing, new questions that come up, and you re- relook at the application, the criteria is Cold Spring Village resident, Phillips Town resident, non-resident, and the only people who use non-residents use Commission facilities is the bandstand for weddings. Okay, I'm just saying that in this chart here, we have not-for-profit resident only. So, it was a not-for-profit organization, such as the KFC, just recently, we're looking at residents only using that. And profit resident only, we did, is we were gonna completely take off, because, you know...
In your discussions with her, was it just whether we wanted that, or was it discussions on a downside of it? I just, I can't quite see any downside of letting someone...
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying...
No, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. So, you agree that a profit, and the question we have, is it resident only or anyone, was two thousand dollars for the use of the facility, and a thousand dollar security deposit? I mean, that's...
Do you have any idea what she paid in Patterson for this one she did?
I don't, I can certainly find out for you.
Sure she did. I mean, she had a...
I think that Jeff did convey the two thousand as a ballpark...
Yeah, so he thought he did.
And she didn't balk at it, so, I'm not suggesting that you don't reconsider what your rate structure is, and I'll try and find out from Patterson what she did pay in that.
It's something we're trying to work on with events like this, and for now that we've taken over Doc's cycle, so, to like, how we're gonna charge, which could be differently than that.
No, I understand. Bigger issue.
Does anyone, the word, have thoughts on whether or not it should be just for residents only and a downside of that? Or, I mean, they should definitely- village residents should be given priority, and that should be somewhere.
Yeah, and they should be given a discount of our fees if they have a...
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Well, it should be different fees, but I got- the question I think that Ruthann needs answered is whether we want to allow non-residents to use the park, so that that can be included in the...
But you know, we do have neighbor issue, we do have neighbors in that area, you know, so you want to be thinking, I'm just bringing this up because this happened after my discussion, you do have neighbors there. And when you're bringing events in-
We have in previous years done the police motorcycle or old cars or something like that. Now, that wasn't necessarily-
Cops and rotters.
Yeah.
That wasn't necessarily resident, maybe, maybe it was sponsored by our police department, I don't know. But, I mean, I think the park is for, you know, is to be used, you know. So I have no problem with, with renting it to outside residents, provided that, you know, it's not pushing a resident out of the way. They're asking us far enough in advance.
Yeah. Have we gotten any feedback from residents about the music from Oktoberfest this past weekend?
Not that I've heard.
The only thing I've heard is parking.
Parking is an issue.
Parking on First Street was an issue for some, some people who, as it turns out, didn't re, didn't live in the village. Those people that were north on First Street, that were beyond the village limits, wanted the village to put up no parking signs.
I have no problem if they're, I, as far as the question goes, I have no problem having non-residents rent the park.
So I guess, for me to go back to the Recreation Commission, which is meeting next week, and this question came up, I guess I would like, is that the board, the trustees are going to agree that the Recreation Commission should revisit this in lieu of residents?
Yes.
For ticketed events? So we have, see, you have just using it because you're having a party, you're using it for, you know, whatever. And then you have using it because you're, you're charging people to come in and use the facility.
Right.
So you have non-ticketed and ticketed events. We're only discussing ticket-
I understand the fee schedule, I think, yeah. I understand that. I understand what you've done, and I think we need to add that, or that's my personal opinion. Steve, what are your feeling?
I agree with him.
Fran?
Yeah.
Marie?
Yeah. I agree as well.
Okay, so we'll agree that, you know, you shouldn't incorporate that, and then, but, and there should be something in there about priorities given.
And really, it's, it's two facilities, right? There's the pavilion, and then there's the ball field. And most, I think most people want to use the pavilion to have a birthday party or a graduation party or whatever. It's unusual, it's an unusual group that wants to use the ball field. The Knights of Columbus were one, cops and robbers or whatever they were, is another one. This, this is another one, which wants that big field. And so-
So when we say Mayor's Park for the ticketed events, do you think people are only going to use Mayor's Park, or slash Mayor's Park Pavilion? I mean, you really can't use, you can't rent out the pavilion when there's an event going on in the ball field, by a ticketed event.
Yeah, and I think if they're using Mayor's Park, they need the restrooms.
No. No, sorry, when they're using the pavilion, they do, but when they're using Mayor's Park, it's got to be bring your own restrooms.
Yeah, they have to, but, but I'm just saying-
Right, because they're not going to walk over there, and we don't want them walking over there.
Well, that, and it's not enough to serve, it's two bathrooms, it's not enough to serve a thousand people.
Oh, no, no. How many did the-
Most porta toilets are nicer than yours.
They have six or eight or 10 for the KFC event?
But, but logistically, I'm saying, if somebody else came and wanted to have a birthday party on August 10th at the pavilion, when you've got a ticketed event going on at the ballpark?
I would ask them. We've already booked an event at the ballpark, so keep in mind, you're going to have a lot of people there. Would you still like to have the pavilion for $50 or whatever it is that we charge? The answer may be yes. The answer may be no, but give them the option.
I mean, similarly, as we're looking, as we're looking at DocSide, we're looking at as being able to rent out three or four different areas, and three or four different events at a time. It may be similar, because DocSide is that big and has that kind of areas. So you may have a wedding at one corner and a birthday party in another.
I, I didn't go to, I don't go to Oktoberfest. Did they, was anything in the pavilion area during Oktoberfest?
The only thing I could see, the only thing I could see as a possibility, I'm not sure they, how they got them in there, was some of their personal trucks that were backed up to the, to the food tent. I, I don't know whether they came in through the pavilion or they came in through Mayor's Park. That's the only thing that I could see. They were not using the, just the best, the best that I could see, they were not using the dumpsters, they were definitely not using the restrooms. They, the porta potties were lined up by the entrance gate. So, so my answer-
So Mayor's Park owned for ticketed events?
No, well, if they want the pavilion also, then it's an additional fee.
Okay.
Or something, we'd have to discuss that, I guess.
And so when we say $2,000 for ticketed event, I'm sorry to bother you with this, but just, I've got a process, so when we go, when I bring it back, we can almost get this done. So when we say $2,000 for a ticketed event, are we saying $2,000 for a two-day ticketed event?
Well, we didn't really ever come up with a number.
I know.
We came up with a one, that's a-
I know.
I mean, there's-
So we're going to say that that's a max of two days, two days.
No, we bet, we, we went on that one, it was based on basically the amount of, the number of people, he said that he was going to have, John Shear, who also does the Oktoberfest. So he was going to do a private, you know, private event, but we were kind of basing it on the amounts that he'd made and whatever, and that's, and, but that's all we had to go by. We didn't do a hell of a lot of research, and it was last minute that we tried to do it.
The reason I bring it up, I just thought of it today, like, does it, it just says the days they're going to use it, so, I mean, someone could come and say, we want to use it for a week, and we're going to charge them $2,000.
No, no, you charge them on a per day, my, my, on a per day basis.
Another thing to consider too, is to, is a certain portion of the vendor fees come to the village.
Well, that would be very challenging to get that information. From a previous time we sat here, or in a commission meeting, they were very adamant about having to share their financial records with the, the commission of the board, the trustees.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be more-
I prefer to go with a fee.
I think it'd be too much of a hassle to try to track that down.
I think that's why we came up with a flat fee, but now the clarification of, how many days does that fee cover?
Jack, do you think Laura could come? Anytime?
I think she should. I would encourage her to come. So tell me what you would like me to tell her.
Well, the, one, the, the attendance, you know, if it's a thousand, if that's for two days or one day, I think that's a good point, remember that. Music, are the, are the hours here? Eleven to six, I mean, if there's music, what kind of music, or whatever, where that's going to be, or how we're going to, you know.
One of the things that Fran's draft DocSide agreement states is that when music occurs at an event, the speakers have to be aimed away from the village. So that would be something that we would like to, I think we would like to see that also down at Mayor's Park, that, that the speakers-
Is there a new agreement that's being developed, a contract that would state all of this? Because I think she should be aware of that.
Well, that's what we've been, we've tasked-
That's what we're discussing.
Tasked, the, well, the Rec Commission's been working on one, you know, it's more specific. And then we've just taken over DocSide, so, and these new events have popped up, so, you know, I kind of put a hold on the bigger events and to discuss it with the board also. But yes, there is one in the making, but-
Because that would have an impact, I assume, it could have an impact on her costs as well, and she at least ought to-
Yeah.
Because in addition, in addition to the fee, there's the police, there's an event person that would have to be on site, so, yeah. There are other fees. I could submit, I mean, I could write draft on this, you know, so people would understand it's a draft, so that she could look at what we're, where we are, but we're not there yet.
When would be the next scheduled event?
Two weeks. Two weeks from today would be-
Two weeks from today, okay. Let me speak with her and encourage her, she works, she has, yeah.
I just might mention that one of the reasons why they might not be thriving is, I'm looking at the dates, and I remember the dates from previous years, and they're very close to the Hudson Valley Wine and Food Fest. It happens two days in early part of September up in Rhinebeck. So, you know, they may just consider-
I'll pass that along.
You know, that, it, it's confusing. When I first saw it, I was like, oh, is this one in Rhine? No, this is Putnam County. You know, it, because the materials look very much the same. So it's worth considering, that's all.
Can you agenda her for the next-
Sure.
-two weeks from tonight?
Yes.
And I'll confirm tomorrow or something that she can be here.
You know, another thing we'll probably need is like a kind of a layout, you know, that's what we asked for. I mean, we don't have to have that day, but it's another thing that we'll probably require. Yeah, like, there's one on the back of this, showing where the tents are, what's there. And I think for, like, even Knights of Columbus, I'm waiting to request them for the Oktoberfest, but they, they knew what tents they were going to have, and that kind of gives you an indication of how big the event's going to be.
Okay, so a lot of tents, because she has a lot of vendors in there.
Also, DocSide's also going to be available, so if that's more interesting to her or works better.
I'd like to inject one thing, one safety concern, that I think we should probably try to fit into whatever, whatever permitting thing that we have, that if there's live cooking, we need to make sure that everybody has fire extinguishers. I've been to two, two, I've participated in two events recently where there was lots of cooking going on with live gas flames, and there wasn't a fire extinguisher within sight anywhere. So, you know, and since, you know, everybody's set up on, you know, unlevel ground and people are bumping into each other and stuff, I think it's, it's very easy for these tents to go up in flames.
Well, Phillips Town has, actually, the building inspector, they have a fees for tents, and they have a building inspector that, like, in Baskerville, if you go to a wedding there, there's a building inspector goes for them.
It's just one consideration that I think we should put as part of permitting process.
Ruthann, just for your information, on the application, she specifically says Mayor's Park Pavilion and Ball Field. So she wants the whole.
Yeah, okay.
Jack, if you could ask Laura about additional expenditures she had when she was at the Patterson Fire Department, such as police and/or fire police and/or personnel from the fire company who are not, who are not there as fire people, but providing other services. I don't know what those might be, but-
Okay, I don't want to ask her, but I think, I'll prepare her to answer that question for you rather than I, only because I don't want to get it wrong. But I'll, I'll try and describe the nature of this discussion and the outstanding questions and all, explain to her how important it is for her.
I think besides, speaking for myself, I think for, for the board, it's, you know, I, I think we're, we're for it. I just think, you know, we just have to get the things out of it.
Thank you for your time. And I can just, one more comment. Kate, we remain just going on return to me leave at the end of this month, and I've been designated for three months only, the acting president of the chamber, so you can, if you need to, just contact me directly until she comes back, okay?
Great, thank you.
I have a question for you. The prison-grade soap dispensers.
Yeah.
Do you have an invoice or an estimate?
I don't yet, I will tell you, Marie, I turned my attention to interesting, interesting C Street in purchasing the 1,500 max, the extra max, so I will get it.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry.
I might have had 20 runs in this.
The Recreation Commission meets again this coming Tuesday, so we'll try to, and then we'll have the meeting sent to you and to say draft on it, so at least when you meet with this woman, you know, you'll have-
One thing I think considering with, with the fee is like the number of people. So it's not just if you're having an event there, that's $2,000, which is just a random number anyway. But if someone's having 500 people there or whatever, that's a lot different in, for a day than, you know, 2,000 people, which means more police or parking problems and, and everything else, so.
Well, Larry Burke is one who established, when we came, we said what's the maximum number of people we should be having at Mayor's Park. And he's the one who gave us the 2,000, so the maximum number is 2,000.
Right.
Except because of-
No, I mean the maximum $2,000, not the people.
No, no, number of people.
Yes, yes, I know that.
Right, not that. And I guess the number of days and things, we kind of didn't process as much. Every time we have one of these discussions, like, more questions come up, goes, how can we clarify this so it's clear, always clear?
I think if you're renting it, it's good, yeah, it's going to be-
We're learning, yeah.
Yeah, oh, no, I agree, I agree, you know, every time we walk us on, we're just-
Whatever the fee is, is, it should be set for per day.
Per day.
Yeah, not for event. I mean, event could be a week or three days, or we probably don't want them a week anyway. It's probably, there could be a two-day limit on it too. I don't think we want someone parked there for a month. So that's another thing you might want to discuss. But I think it should be per day, and it should be, one thing to consider is the number of people that they're anticipating. And I know that that's, you know, not a guarantee that's how many people, but it affects, how it affects the village.
Well, I think, one of the questions we have on the current application is the number of tickets that will be sold.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know how you can get receipts, and then after the fact, say, oh, well, you had 500 more people than you said you were going to have.
Yeah, that's, that's the rough thing about, you know, because if we, if we set our fees based on the number of people, they're going to tell you they're going to have 500, and then 1,000 are going to walk in the door. And then we're, you know, so that, I mean, I guess, I guess basically, if you're going to have between 500 and 1,000, it's going to be the price-
If you want this amount of space, this is what this amount of space costs you.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
It's like, you buy, you buy a house and it's 300, you know, 3,000 square feet, you're going to have 20 people in it, or you're going to have two people.
I, I would, I guess I would hesitate to stay away from something based upon the number of square feet that are going to be in use. It would seem to me that it's the ball field or it's not. It's not 25% of the ball field.
Right.
So, and number of tickets sold could be equal to the number of people attending. So pick your, your, pick, pick your metric, if, if your metric-
I agree, yeah.
Right.
And I don't think anyone wants to sit down, they would go quicker.
No, no, no.
But we, but this brings up a good point, you know, we're seeing, because if her application is saying using both facilities, and our current rental agreement just as Mayor's Park and not Mayor's Park and Pavilion, then that is something that we're going to have to revisit on a fee structure. But we will work on it again at next meeting, and then we will send you the-
We have some time too, so you don't have to get it done in one meeting.
No, 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 it's going to be a draft, so that you-
I mean, even a draft, dude, it's not essential to have it done this month.
Look, I mean, if you're, she's going to come back in two weeks though.
Yeah.
If she has a draft.
Right.
Right, okay.
You have that.
That'd be helpful.
Good to know, thank you. I have to go home and do my other job.
Okay, next is a Resolution 24, 2018, adopting sexual harassment prevention policy. So I'm not going to read the full policy, I think it's a standard policy.
It's from the state.
Jeff took it from the state. Anyone have, are there any discussions first before we do the resolution as far as-
Just do the resolution.
Do the resol, okay. Okay, so I'll make a, or, I'll make a motion to adopt the sexual harassment prevention policy.
Which I'm going to read now.
Which I will read, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Whereas, New York State requires all employers in the New York adopt, let me start over. Whereas, New York State requires all employers in New York adopt a sexual harassment prevention policy that meets statutory requirements set forth in New York State Labor Law 201-G. And whereas, the sexual harassment prevention policy shall apply to all employees, independent contractors, vendors, consultants, and non-employees that provide services to the village. And whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring is in full support of legislation and efforts aimed at preventing harassment of any type in the workplace. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the adoption of the sexual harassment prevention policy attached here to as Exhibit A shall be effective as of November-
October.
I mean, October 9th, 2018. It's a roll call vote, or, any discussion, sorry.
So there is a class that's going to be offered?
What's that?
There is, is there a class that is going to be offered?
Yes, and I think they're working on that, or Jeff's working on coordinating that.
Okay, and it'll be offered multiple times, I assume, because we need to get all of the committees, the commissioners, the boards, the police. the police, employees, fire personnel, all of the.
Those mentioned.
All of the, the, so would have to be offered at, at least two times, if not three.
It's going to be, there's gonna be an offer of an online version, where you have to sign in, and it comes through either permanent or insurance company, and they can control, or they can regulate who takes it and doesn't take it.
Is there a date by which everyone must take it?
I think when this came out, I don't know, I think the date was when we had to adopt this, I'm not sure if it was when we had to take the, when we had to take the sexual class.
I don't see any. I don't see any.
Well, taking the workshop isn't in the resolution, is it? What's that? You don't have, the resolution doesn't say you have to take the workshop.
You, you do have to take the workshop.
Requires. I don't see it in there.
Yeah, it's not in the resolution, but.
Okay, it's not in the resolution, all right.
But I, I do believe it is mandatory that all of those people mentioned have to attend the class, whether it's in person or online, that the only question is finding them. Okay, I'll see if I can find out.
Michael Rockwell.
Yes, trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Belovu?
Yes.
Mayor Mirandi?
Yes.
Who seconded the?
Fran.
Fran seconded.
Fran seconded.
Fran just asked me, so that's strange.
Brain good.
This is the last conference. Uh, next is authorize mayor to sign service fee agreement with Penflex. This is for the LoSAP and, there's something else to write, uh, LoSAP and Gatsby seventy-three. Uh, we do this every year, it says a hundred dollars more than last year. Are you more familiar with this, or not?
I asked Jeff, he said it's the same one that we do every year, and that was as much as I got.
So I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a service fee agreement with Penflex.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You want me to sign this? Are you seeing Jeff in the morning?
Yes.
Uh, approval of bills?
I move to approve batch number forty-eight oh three, for a total amount of thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Ninety-nine.
What?
What's the?
Ninety, ninety-nine.
It says ninety-nine.
It says ninety-nine. Hold on, just see what it says in here. I think there's a some.
Yes, it is. It's thirty-one thousand six hundred ninety-nine cents.
Ninety-nine.
Got it.
Thank you.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes, nine twenty-five eighteen, workshop, trustees.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from nine twenty-five eighteen.
I will second. We have any comments or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment? Yes.
I have three different hats to wear in these, this public.
Which one you got on now, Jen?
This is just me, member of the public. And it might be an ignorant comment because I haven't been to your meetings, but I am concerned when you're talking about renting out the parks. I'm not concerned about it, but want everybody in all outsider shoes, the parks, et cetera, but I think that you guys should consider, I don't know how they do it in other places, but it just seems wrong to have a park entirely closed down for a ticketed event multiple weekends during the season. Does that make sense? And that's not happening now, but I think if Cold Spring blows up more, whatever is happening, like, you could feasibly be looking at me wanting to go to Mayor's Park and take my kids there and not have a free weekend to do so. I don't, Mayor's Park is underused, so I'm not as concerned about that. I'm concerned more about Dockside, which I know is a public park and they have their own history of a permitting system which seems to work fine and everyone gets to use it. But just, that's my public comment. I would like to, particularly if you're doing for-profit ticketed events that close the gates of the park to the public, just as a member of the public, I am concerned that you consider, like, maybe percentage of time, like, we can't go over, you know, twenty percent of the weekends during the season or some, you know, something. I don't know what the number is, but, and just in case you get a lot of people, you might as well set that now while you're redoing this permitting process and think about it now. So that's member of, wait, member of the tree board, and just also member of the public. If you guys are gonna be, I was thinking about this. The tree board has talked a lot about beautification of the village, how to maintain the tree pits. Do we do a volunteer committee? How do we beg for people for money? And as you know, I've been working several years on begging people for money for the tree guards on Main Street, which are just starting to go in. I don't know if anyone saw the new ones, which look kinda cool, that are in front of Carolyn's old flower shop. You can walk by them, but I would like to see the village personally and as a tree board chair, devote some money to beautification and, and actually have a system whereby that's spent every year, not in a weirdo way, but in a normal way. And if that, if you're talking about increased revenue from renting our beautiful public spaces, I feel like maybe that would be, or some other, Marie, you would know the best, you can fine tune it. But I really think you guys should think about devoting regular money to beautification and having someone or a coalition of people, you know, or you guys be in charge of spending in some ways on a regular basis, you know. That's, if you have additional revenue coming in from parking meters or from renting our parks, that would be a perfect time to have, you know, even just a few thousand dollars devoted to Main Street would make a big difference, trust me. I've been begging so many people for, private people for money, and it would help if the village matched it like you did two years ago with a little bit.
Just in, I, I agree with the comment that, that we should all be more invested in beautification of the village. And just looking at the bills that were signed this, this week, including the authorization for expenditures for the tree advisory board, that was over forty-five hundred dollars that the village is paying for the tree advisory board's beautification efforts in the past month, the thirty-five.
Those are not for, sorry, those are, those are for tree maintenance, correct? Those are for public safety things, that's not, nothing to do with beautification.
And the trump, and, and the stump grinding, that was a thousand.
Again, public safety and I guess beautification, those go.
So, I, there's, I, I guess there are multiple aspects of beautification. There's the safety, sorry, the tr, the village's tree population is maintaining it and enhancing it is, is not, is not an inexpensive proposition, particularly when we're applying for a grant for forty-nine thousand dollars for, for tree safety, tree maintenance. What, what you're suggesting is that there's an activity of beautification that goes beyond safety.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with trees. I mean, trees could be.
What, other than it's tree pit? There, there's a, a lot of the discussion on the tree pits. Do we, is there a, a bud, not a budget, but.
There's not a budget, there's a goal. Do you want me to tell you the goal?
That's, that's what I'm looking for.
The goal is, I think we all know the goal. It's all of the crazy insane weeds that get out of control, particularly in the business district. Individual property owners in the residential districts tend to, to take care. I mean, Bugsy knows best, some people don't, but, and they, the highway department hits it maybe once or twice a year. But in the business district, it's just, you know, since Cecile retired, it was when a couple of other volunteers who used to do this for free on their own labor, it's really gone, like, it, it, we need to figure out some kind of system for it. And so the tree board has been talking about, well, we could organize random volunteers that don't know what they're doing. If we could try, we could, you know, we, we have a lot of energy to try and do it, but it all comes down to, you need to like, you know, have a few thousand dollars and just pay, pay someone to weed, or have a, an independent program that doesn't involve money and have every property owner be required to take care of their tree pit. I'm not saying I support that. Or, you know, a combination of volunteers or some kind of contest. We're talking with the chamber about like a, you know, beauty, beautification contest that won't cost money. But I, I'd really like to see the village devote maintenance dollars to, to the areas that are, I mean, we all see them, that, sometimes the weeds are like this high and.
So, so what do you think the responsibility is for people on Main Street? Like, like if we're gonna keep take, make, taking money out of our budgets for Main Street, what, what about the people who live on the other streets? I mean, do, do we go out and do we beautify their streets? Why, why, you know, we're, we're getting nothing from, you know, from our, from our taxes, we're not getting anything returned. We have, we have people here that it's their stores, it's in front of their buildings, they're the ones who should be. To me, it's like, it's just insane. I don't understand it, I don't understand it. Keep putting money into making their business better, making their street better. I understand Main Street and, you know, and I went down and did that one tree pit because you said that was gonna, you know, maybe start people, you know, investing, and, and I don't know if it will or not. But I mean, I'm willing to invest, but, but what about the rest of the people on Main Street? And what do you say to the rest of the residents that we keep putting money in, we have to deal with traffic, we can't come down on Cold Spring if we really want to. Talking about parks, we can't even come down on our Main Street on crazy weekends when boats come in and whatever. So, I mean, you know, if you have, unless you like thousands of people in your village. So, I know a lot of people, the people I know, that won't come into the village, you know. So, you know, that's, you know, to your point about the parks and having weekends where you can actually go down, maybe we should do that for Main Street too. I just don't understand, we're, you know, when we started out the tree committee, it seemed like, you know, it's a great idea and I'm, I'm totally for it, and we put a lot of money, more money in it than I think we expected to from the time. I mean, I think we, we bumped it up like ten thousand or more dollars when we didn't get the grant, so that things could be done. Is, I mean, isn't that true? I mean, the budget from the tree from the beginning till now.
I understand what you're saying.
But now you have another project, which is the Main Street, which we didn't do the pits with cement or whatever, because this is a beautification project, we took that out of the, out of the project. And now, we're gonna have to pay extra for that, or trees dying, like, or whatever. What you're asking for us is put more money into maintaining these, the pits.
The tree pits or other things on Main Street? The, the regular, you have regular maintenance, you guys do, right? They, they sweep, I'm assuming, and they weed whack a couple of times a year. I've talked, I mean, I've talked to Bugsy about it. But yeah, I wondered if there was some more, some regular maintenance that we could do to Main Street that I could help with by organizing volunteers, the village could contribute some, some dollars. The, the, I just want to address your point about, I hear from both of you that you're grumpy about the money being spent on trees. I would like to point out that if you had zero tree committee right now, you would still have had to spend that money to take out the dangerous trees that have been taken out.
I'm not grumpy at all about that.
What, what you've gotten with the tree board is a lot of people doing free, free labor for you, talking to all, getting the lowest bid, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You would have still had to take down. Most of our work, and the reason we applied for this grant, is work applying for money to take down dangerous things and to prune dangerous limbs, because we don't have enough money to do that, the village doesn't. There's too many old trees in the village that have, that have been neglected for, you know, thirty or forty years. So, I feel like the beautification project, which is a little bit like my pet project, is a little bit of a side thing from the tree board trying to maintain trees and take down dangerous trees, et cetera. So, the tree grant, I understand, because we didn't get it the first year, we had to sequester that money for this year. But I'm hoping for your ten thousand dollar investment, you'll get fifty grand back. I mean, we'll, we'll know maybe at the end of this month, and if not, I'll, I'll apply again. It took me, what, three weeks to do that application? Like, I, I am in just one person, and I am just saying, we're trying, we have people spending eleven hundred dollars on these tree pit guards, where I'm trying to get the bricks in, on the areas so that more people will spend money. I met with the chamber who's ecstatic about the work that you did on the corner down there with the bricks around it, and want to get more, they've had three or four other businesses want those, that look, and they wanna know, what's the process? They're in application, so I'm trying to develop an application so people can sponsor that privately themselves. I'm trying to get the private money to come in, but I feel like most people say, well, this is, you know, I've told you this before.
The mulching and the weeding, that there would be some sort of fabric or material in there.
Well, there's not any, there's no such thing that does that. The, the bricks are supposed to suppress the weeds on the sides, but in the pit around the tree, you're always gonna have, you know, if you put fabric in with mulch on top, et cetera, you always have. Because they blow it and they root on top of it. So you always have some maintenance, and anyway, it's just, we can, we can stop on. This is my own personal comment, and my last comment, and then Fran tell me, is the, the, I just, it was a question. The current users of Dockside Park, I'm putting on my Cold Spring Film Society hat now, do, do we have an opportunity to comment on the policy that you guys are making, or just as, as members of the public, and when will that be? That's my question.
I, I think Fran and, Fran and I had hoped to have it in front of the board for either the next, last meeting this month.
Probably November. Just an aside, I know you talked about the weeding and, you know, the weeds in front of the stores and everything else. We're, we're pretty adamant with the business owners and the people who rent the businesses and the people who own the buildings, when the snow and ice comes, that they have to clean their sidewalks. Well, the village code says very specifically, the owner or owners and occupant or occupants of each and every building and lot of ground in the village shall at all times keep the sidewalk in front of their respective houses, buildings, and lots free from weeds and rubbish of every kind. So it's their responsibility, as much as it's their responsibility to clean the snow and the ice and everything else. So, you know, getting the highway guys to go in.
But beyond, I bet, beyond the sidewalk.
To keep the sidewalk in front of their respective houses, buildings, and lots free from weeds and rubbish of any kind.
Right. Doesn't talk about the utility strip, which is.
I mean, when weeds don't grow on the sidewalk, they grow on the utility strip.
Well, they grow around the trees. I mean, that's what they grow on trees. So, it's a, I mean, I'll just cut this off and we can talk about it privately too. But the, the, the energy is good, and Eliza is one of the ones that wants to do like a contest and try. I think like a better strategy in part of the board would be to encourage somehow in a pro, positive way, encourage businesses and property owners to.